Welcome to the East Bridgewater School Committee Meeting of March 10th, 2020. Please, at this time, I would take a motion to open the meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Rob.
Second.
Second by Tim. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice.
Thank you. Welcome to everyone we have in the audience. At this time, we have a report from the East Bridgewater Junior Senior High School Student Advisory Council, and that's Kiera Largan.
Hi, everyone. So, most recently, DECA, which is a club that I am involved in, recently competed at our state's conference in Boston on February 27th through the 29th. We had about 15 kids attend, I believe, and of them, I personally am advancing on to the international competition in Nashville. Hopefully, we will be traveling to coronavirus pending.
Congratulations.
So I'm very excited about that. And we also have six other leadership spots where six other students will get the opportunity to go to and attend, and we're all really excited about that. March Madness is next week. Signups are now available for students tomorrow and Thursday during lunches and after school. The senior class is also planning our Piya Teacher Event, where if two teachers collect the most money in a jar in their classroom, they will get pied during the NHS Dodgeball Tournament. That Dodgeball Tournament is next week, the 18th, in the high school gym, I believe.
How come there's not a jar in the superintendent's office?
Also, next week, we-
Well, very good. There's an office in the superintendent's room if you need.
You could make some good money.
So also, next week, we have Mr. EBHS on the 20th. And then also, starting this Friday, is Relay Fridays, which will be tri-EM students, the Music Honor Society. They'll be sitting during all high school lunches, collecting money for Relay for Life, which they are doing at Bridgewater State University on April 3rd. Then finally, drama is their performance of 42nd Street is on March 27th and 28th at 7:00 PM in the auditorium. And then finally, I'd finally like to address the students' opinion on the coronavirus. Many of them are really upset by the after-school cancellations that we've had for this week. A lot of them, there's questions about, well, we're here in this building, seven hours a day anyways. Why does it matter if we're here, like, three hours after school anyways? So a lot of students, that abrupt cancellation has been very confusing for them, and I know that the administration is under a lot of pressure from the district and from parents. However, I think that students would like a bit of an understanding as to why these cancellations are so important and to why they're happening. And I know that it is addressed in the agenda, but I'd just like to make sure that that is covered in the discussion. And that's it for me.
Can I ask one quick question? When is the trip to Nashville for the finals?
First weekend of May.
Oh, that's a while off.
For the questions regarding just the high school, I would ask you to meet with Mr. Sylvia and have the class officers meet with him. From each class, someone or representative to meet with Mr. Sylvia to discuss some of the things that were taken off the after-school, whether it was the dance or the overnight. I am going to address the coronavirus when we get to that, and then we'll talk why we did some of those. But always know that you have a route to Mr. Sylvia at any time before, you know, you don't have to wait for this meeting. Go right to see him and talk about what's going on.
No, because the cancellations were announced today.
Okay.
So it made sense.
Well, and at some point tonight, can we just clarify for the general public what's being canceled and what isn't?
We certainly can, because I've-
Stuff is lying of-
Got it right in front of me.
What schools and, if we could just do that, that would be helpful.
Sure.
Next up, we have superintendent's corner. Get away.
So let me begin by talking about the coronavirus. Today, at 3:30, the governor, we were told by the Superintendent Association that to please turn on our TVs or to please get on to the website to watch the governor's state of the state, or state of emergency press conference at 3:30. The governor called a state of emergency. In his first three sentences and his first three people that he designated, one of them was school districts and the superintendents following guidelines and protocols from their local Department of Health, following the State Department of Health, and following the CDC's regulations and the State Department from Washington, DC. So, we're doing that. We have been on multiple, I gave you some literature down when you picked up your packets. We have been on daily emails with the Superintendent's Association and my colleagues, talking about from trips all the way to what are we doing, how are we cleaning our buildings, to who's cleaning buses, to does anybody have a child or employee that has come in contact with COVID-19 coronavirus. We also have had a conference call last Friday at 1:00 PM with the Department of Education, with Commissioner Riley, a representative from the state office, and his designees, and all of the superintendents. Tomorrow, on Thursday at 1:00, I have another update with Department of Education, and usually on those calls is someone from the State Department, from the Commonwealth, whether it is Lieutenant Governor or someone who's representing the governor's office will be on that phone call, too. What we know and what we continue to say is social distancing is to take, you know, to stay within six feet of somebody, three to four steps away from somebody, that we're not sharing water bottles, that we are washing our hands before, after lunch, before and after the use of the bathrooms. When you sneeze, when you cough, please cover your mouths, then wash your hands. Each building has been given, for each classroom in the District of East Bridgewater, hand sanitizer and wipes. The main offices, all three principals receive boxes of hand sanitizer and wipes. The Mitchell School did have an allergic, they do have someone that is highly allergic to the wipes. The wipes were not sent to the Mitchell School because of, out of an abundance of caution in that area, but they did get extra sanitizer and extra spray. The Central School, I can't say enough about the parents of our Central School students and every year getting all of the supplies that come in to each of the classrooms. The kindergarten classrooms even helped us supply some of the rooms while we were waiting for extra supplies to come in. Our supplies are in. There's cases actually in our office because they've run out of supply room at each of the buildings of the supplies. We, I also have brought in an extra custodian for each building for each day of this week, and we will assess on Friday where we are. Each building principal can attest to that, that there has been an extra custodian. The extra custodian is only there to disinfect and wipe down doorknobs, door handles, staircases, and railings, inside and outside doors, and go through the bathrooms continuously. They are not there to help, to help in the cafeteria. They are not there to help out moving books or shelves or someone's tables. They are only there at this time to work on disinfecting and making sure that areas are clean appropriately and on a constant movement.
So is that happening, that's happening throughout the day, not just at end of day?
This is, I have brought in an extra custodian on a daily basis from 6:00 AM to 2:00 PM while the students are in the building at the high school. At the Mitchell School, from 7:00 to 3:00, when the students are in the Mitchell School, and from 7:30 to 3:30 at the Central Elementary School, there's an extra custodian. So they are there, helping with disinfecting, helping just keep up that daily regiment of making sure we're disinfecting the areas that are most commonly used by students. And doorknobs, the handles, the railings on the stairs, the elevators, the windows coming in and out of some of the buildings where the kids push. The tables are always being disinfected. I can't say enough to our, for our custodians or our cafeteria staffing. Deb Vaughn, as our food director, was in our first sort of task meeting when we sat down and said, who's doing what, where are the ordering coming from, and how are we going to address the issues. At the high school and at the Mitchell School, we tend not to see the cafeteria, the food workers come out to the front bays or for the tables. I do know that Deb has sent them out, and they will come out as much as possible in between to disinfect and help cleaning of the tables, because we don't have that at the high school, and they will be in and out from behind the counters. This is something, I don't want to say that the high school and the Mitchell School don't see a lot. I would say that Kate Byrne, Dr. Williams, and every elementary teacher that is in this room probably sees on a daily basis from August 29th till June. This is, whether it is the flu or the common cold, little kids' hands are all over everything and each other at all times, even though they are unexpected behaviors. To put your hands on someone else's tray, or someone else's property, or to sit in someone else's seat, or to take somebody else's paper, they may be unexpected behaviors, but that happens at the elementary school. And if you've ever been at the elementary school or Central, walking throughout the day, there are wipes and there is disinfectant before you walk into the classroom, and there's disinfectant when you walk into the classroom. And probably, pretty much all the times I've seen the changes of the class, the teacher's continuing wiping down tables and chairs. I know that happens at Mitchell School as well, but we really see it at the pre-K K1, too, because we do have a lot of mats. I was over there Friday, I think it was, or Thursday, and walked through for a couple of minutes, and they were, we had some students down in one of our rooms on the mat, and once he was done, once the two students were done, the teacher went over and wiped the mats down. So, I think everybody's, I know that everybody's on, I don't think it, I know it. We will continue to work diligently to keep up on this. I think that, again, you saw the "wash your hands" sign. That's the biggest- I can't stress that enough, Dr. Williams, that we both have heard on these calls and in our emails from every school district and the Commonwealth, their biggest thing is wash your hands and to keep distance. You asked about the events or the activities that were going to happen this week. Our first cancellation was the overnight for the 9 through 12 lock-in. I spoke to Mr. Sylvia. We felt that that would be best for where we were today, where we're going to be on Saturday, or Friday night into Saturday. To have 250, 300 kids in a gym area, running around, dancing, sweating, talking, your high school students, I'm going to be very frank, I wouldn't be surprised if some of you were holding hands, some of you would hug, and possibly a few of you might kiss. I need to protect you, although I would hope that we would all, I know that none of you think that that happens, but they do. They kiss and they hold hands. And if I have to be the lead on this, I will, those are things that I need to do for safety. The dance came next. He, Mr. Sylvia came back down. He said, I'm on a listserv with every principal in the state as well. We're canceling dances. They're canceling sports. They're canceling lots of things right now. I'm extremely nervous about having 7th and 8th graders for two and a half hours running around. 7th and 8th graders, let me tell you what their dances look like. They don't really kiss and hug. What they do is they run around a lot, and they sweat, and they talk, and then they dance, and then they hold hands, and there's, it's concerning if someone has a cold, the flu, bronchitis, that could go through. So we decided, for the abundance of caution, that we would cancel the dance. Then we pulled back one more. Mr. Sylvia and Mr. Leonard came down and said, the guns and hoses staff basketball game was Thursday night. And we looked, Mr. Sylvia said, you know, if I'm not going to let the kids do this, how can we let adults do this? And sometimes I don't even know everything that's going on. So we sat down and we said, yeah, you know, this is, it's the right thing to do. These are our safety personnel of the district or the community. We talked about it, and we said, let's cancel everything for this week. We just got a state of emergency today at 3:30 PM, and it's Tuesday. The basketball game is Thursday, the overnight is Friday, and the dance is Friday night. I don't have a crystal ball. I don't know when this is going to end. I would like to say that I hope that we're in the clear by next Wednesday, but I can't tell you that. What I can tell you that is my job is the health and safety and the well-being of 2,200 students, of 185 faculty, of 100 teacher assistants, and everybody else, up to 250 staff that are under my purview, and I don't want anybody to get sick. And if I can stop that, then I will. Three and a half weeks ago, Mrs. Byrne called us, maybe four weeks ago, and said, within the first 15 minutes, 23 students were going home. The nurse had kids going home. I think it was the two last kindergarten rooms at the end, Mrs. Tellis and Mrs. DeMar. They were like, it was rampant. Once one gets off the bus, they go, and it's very quick, and we had the flu. We had a lot of kids in the district with the flu. At that point, we did just what we're doing today. Our custodial staff went in there that night. They used those, our foggers that have a disinfectant in them. They also did that for a couple of weeks, and I still, I'm pretty sure they're still doing it. I know they're doing it. So, we also talked to Lucini, bus lines. Bill Lucini was here yesterday. He met with myself and Dr. and John Shay. We spoke to him about cleaning after the morning run, and then after the evening run, and then a spot check in the morning with the Lysol cans and this and that. They were, they're on board with that. I mean, we're not the only school district that they service. I saw Superintendent of Easton, the Superintendent of West Bridgewater, and the Superintendent of Bridgewater, Rainham. We've all spoken to Mr. Lucini. Mr. Lucini is going and has talked to all of his bus yards, and they are all cleaning the buses. This afternoon at 2:30, 2:00, I'm sorry, 4:00, I asked Mr. Sylvia and our three advisors, Mrs. Sealy, Mrs. Kruger, Mrs. Sarzin, and Ben Healy, who will be taking the 8th graders to DC, to meet with the parents of those trips going to Costa Rica and Spain and Italy for, to gather with me to discuss the feedback. I wanted to hear what parents wanted to do and what their feedback, and I wanted to tell them what I was going to do on behalf of the school district. About a week ago, we heard that Italy, or a week and a half ago, Italy, there would be no travel to and from Italy. The trip that we had planned was Italy-Spain. You can't say you can't go to Italy, but we're going to send you to Spain. I don't know if you know, if you've seen the map, but Spain's not too far from Italy. So, for me, what are we doing? We sold the trip to go to Italy, and now you just want to send the kids to Spain. We didn't say anything. I didn't ask you to get involved in that time, because I felt we need to just wait to see what the company does. In the last few days, they have spoken to Mrs. Sealy, said, yeah, we're not going to go to Spain either, which is great. I then still didn't engage you as a school committee to say, hey, let's put some pressure on this, or call a moratorium, or do, say, we're not going to do this, for a couple of reasons. Number one, we're working against a huge company, and they have their own bylaws, policies that are really, can't be broken. They are pretty secure. We then had the Costa Rica trip. They had not called off their trip. Then we had the state of emergency, but we also were asked by the Commissioner of Education last Friday at 1:00, please do not travel. Again, he can't tell a company, hey, we're going to tell the schools not to travel. You have to honor what I say, and the school says, so give them all their money back. So again, it was, we advise you and we ask that you not travel. Dr. Williams and I and Mr. Shay have had extensive conversations on this, and what I told our parents tonight. I will not allow a company to give vouchers to kids, to not at least go 120 miles an hour to try to get their money back. It is not fair, and it is wrong. And for any travel company not to honor us or any other of the 250 school districts and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, it's wrong. So let me push you to today. Last week, I had written an email, and Dr. Williams will tell you, we are on a listserv, that I can't tell you how many emails, and I'm sure that the principals have been on it. I'm sure that today, that, Tim, you probably had 900 because of the elementary school to the north. We decided, as a group of superintendents of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and the Superintendent's Association, to engage our law firm, which is DePietro and Long, to author a letter from, on behalf of the, all of the schools, and we will sign on. So East Bridgewater Public Schools, Marshfield Public Schools, Abington Public Schools. I think there's 180 of us all going someplace. There's somebody going someplace. They'll send a letter to the company. We will sign on to that and say, we don't want vouchers. We don't want 50%. We want our money back. And then we will continue to do business with you. If you don't do this, we're not going to do business. However, I also did speak to our law firm, Valario Hillman and Dominello. I spoke to Nick this afternoon. He knew about that, because he also has other districts that want to get involved in this. He already knew about this. We've been talking about it over the last week or so. Not only are we going to author that letter, but each individual school district, just like us, we will write our own letter and say, accompanying the letter from the Superintendent's Association, know that the East Bridgewater Public School District will, you know, will represent each one of the students who will be traveling to Italy and Spain, and I will have the school committee support. I would hope that the school committee would support that. We had, over the small auditorium, the lecture hall was packed, and it was standing room only. I can tell you, the parents do not want vouchers. The parents do not want 50% back. They don't want 60% back. None of them want 75% back. They want 100%, and they want us to go for it. And I said that I would, that's my job, and I will fight for them. So, and we're going to try to do the best that we can as a district and as a Commonwealth. Their company office, or their, the local office is in Cambridge. Harvard shut down today. I think that'll put a lot of pressure on them, but also, the state of emergency that the governor has called will certainly put some more pressure. Grand Classroom, they were sponsoring the Costa Rica trip. We got done talking with Deb Sealy and Mrs. Kruger this afternoon. I said, you know, I'm not going to say you can't, but I don't think it's a good idea. She had spoken to the company. They didn't think it was, they probably, they knew that we were probably not going to go internationally to Costa Rica, and pretty much the governor said, no international travel, especially for students. We then spoke about going on a domestic trip. So, she runs back upstairs. She talked to Grand Classroom, and they offered to put our kids on a plane to go to the Everglades and to do a trip in the Everglades. Dr. Williams looked it up. Wow, this looks like a great trip. Wow, that's very nice. Well, you could offer it to the parents, see if they want to do that, and this and that. That was at 2:00. At 3:30, the governor came on, or 3:00, and we watched the state of emergency. Please, no domestic travel for our students. Within the 20 minutes or so in between that, we, I talked to Mrs. Kruger. Mrs. Kruger emailed me, and I said, I think we need to rethink this. I'd asked that we rethink this this evening. They would like to rethink that as well. We will now, I will also go ask the Superintendent's Association to send a letter to Grand Classroom. They seem to be working, they seem to be an easier group to work with. It just seems that right now, in talking to Mrs. Kruger. And then we will also have our attorneys say, on behalf of the students and the trip, and we'll go from there. Our job is to make sure the kids are safe and well-being, and we certainly don't want people to take advantage of our students. To me, I think, I think we sign on for trips, and you take a risk that the trip is going to go or it doesn't going to go, and some people can afford the $4,800 plus the $150 insurance. Some people can't afford the $150 insurance, so they didn't buy it. That doesn't mean that we, as a school district, have to sit back and say, well, all the people that bought the insurance, we'll get your money back, all those that you can't. No. I am not a school superintendent that will have the haves and have-nots. It doesn't matter. All these students are important, and we'll push the best that we can over the next few days. I do think within the next 24 hours, I'll see the authored letter from the Superintendent's Association. That will go, we will sign on to that. I will sign on to that, from RN. When it comes to our letter from the district, I'll have it authored, and Nick and I'll go over it. I'll send it out to you, and then we'll get that to just jump on back, because we certainly don't want anybody to lose any money. Our parents don't want to lose money. The nice part about having something like that, yes, there's financial, there's a financial position to every parent being there this evening, but that's not what I heard from parents tonight. It was really, you know, we offered opportunity and access to go someplace. We want them to go to Italy and Spain. We're not going to Peru, or we're not going to, and Mrs. Sealy was trying everything she could to try to get a trip, to try to help these kids, and to try, and, I mean, you know, that's what our teachers do, you know. It wasn't working out this way, so let's try this. Mrs. Kruger did the same thing. It's not working out this way, let's try this. I have not, and I don't think we need to jump the gun on the Washington, DC trip. I think we need to wait on that. It's in June. I think it's the last week of June. Let's wait on that. I don't think we need to go. I think this, again, I think it's very much like the cold and flu virus, but I am not a doctor. I'm not in the medical field, but I am a superintendent of schools. My job is for the safety and well-being.
How many students and families are we talking about here?
There was 31 going to Spain and Italy, and 24, plus the three is 28, and then 28 going to Costa Rica. It's a lot.
It's a lot, yeah.
You know?
Does it matter from EF's perspective that they can't, it's not even that we're deciding not to go. They can't deliver the trip that we booked, that we couldn't go to Italy if we wanted to. It's not even that we're choosing not to.
And that's, it's just the language that their contract, I mean, Tim, when I tell you that their contract, I mean, if there's a big snake, and we see it, well, it doesn't have a red mark on it, so it doesn't mean that that's snakes, but, you know, I mean, it is so like, it is locktight, airtight. But Mr. Dominello did say that in every contract, there is always something that-
It would be a shrewd business move on their part to refund the money, given the amount of business they're going to lose from districts over-
And I think that EF would lose the entire Cambridge, the Commonwealth.
Right.
Because EF is not just a travel company. They, I mean, a, just a school trip company. They also, they're a travel agency. You know, have you been to Harvard lately? I mean, I probably would say 70% of their student body is international. You go up to Boston, it's, I mean, it's very, it's an international, it's just such a diverse city now. I mean, people, kids come from all over to go to our colleges and universities. I mean, it's just-
How long have we been in partnership with EF?
This is our fifth trip.
Fifth trip.
It's a lot of money they're risking.
But it's not just us. It is-
It's worth small potatoes compared to some other districts.
Well, that's why I was, yeah, when I said it to our families, I said, you know, I don't like to say wealthier districts, but like, you know, your Lexington's and your Wellesley's, I mean, they're going to- I mean, they're going to Thailand, and they're going to, you know, and they, they don't do that once a year, they go to Thailand, and then they go to here, and then they go to there, you know, three or four trips a year. So, we're lucky to have a great trip in April, and Mrs. Celia, I give her a lot of credit. She tried to say, "Hey, let's go in July." And, you know, a couple of parents, like, "My kid's got to work, I got to work, I got to, you know, we planned this April trip." And I give a lot of credit to the parents for asking questions and saying, "Look, hey, we decided on April, we started paying for it last May, and it was $350 a paycheck, or $178 a paycheck. One trip was $178, the other one was $352. Their last payment is due on March 20th, so I have to move tomorrow, we've got to sort of move." You know, do we pay their last payment, or do we not pay their last payment? If we don't pay their last payment, then they're going to say they defaulted, and blah, blah, blah. If they pay their last payment, say, "Hey, listen, we were going to go, we stayed in the game with you, now give me all of it back." So, those are legal questions that will be answered tomorrow, and hopefully, we get through that. But I did want you to know that, you know, we're going to, you know, there's going to be no travel, and we'll continue to work with the students and families. But, with the state of emergency, I can confidently say that I think we have better legs to stand on going forward. On the parent meeting, I want to thank all of the parents this evening, I don't know how many seats are in there, but I would say there's probably, I don't know, 75 people there this evening, 75, 80. I asked them to come to the school committee meeting. I said, I had, I told Dr. Williams to run to her office and get all of their, her map assessments and everything else, so we could talk to parents, because it's hard to have parent meetings, and to get them out, but this was important. And they showed me, and they're showing you all, and Trista was there, because her sons are going, and Dr. Williams was there, so it was, it's important. The hand sanitizers and wipes, we have ordered, we have more, they are here. The extra custodian is going to go, we'll assess that every Friday, and we'll see where we're at. And I'm doing it on Fridays, because the conference call is late on a Thursday. We're not going to call them off on a Friday, have them here on Friday, then we'll reassess. We'll take the activities and any after-school functions that we have coming up at the other buildings. I don't know if I'm missing anything, I know that the principals are here this evening, if there's something that I've missed from the Mitchell or the Central School. I know that we have some fundraisers coming up, and some days that will go inside and outside, but I think as the, as the weather improves, we'll be outside a little bit more. That's really what I have on those two, on those two issues, and I think that if anybody, again, if anybody has any issues about the coronavirus, I would ask that you call the district office, myself or Dr. Williams. If I'm not in the office, Dr. Williams will take the call, if I am there, I will certainly take the call. When you call, when you call individual buildings, not that you can't, not that you can't talk to the principals, they are busy, and they are moving around a lot, they might not be in their office. But if you want something, and you know something about the coronavirus, please call my office, we'll give you the information that we have. Please look at our website, we have our letters that we sent out to the community, we also have the letter from the local Department of Health. That is up on our website, we also have wash-your-hand signs, the same wash-your-hand signs all over the district, in each of the buildings, and that, a student, Mr. Sylvia, you're going to mention that, the student who drew the hands for us, and made that up for us. I want to thank Mr. Chilcopp for getting those done, and immediate, so...
We have a hand sanitizer at the cafeterias.
Yes. There are, we bought some, we bought about 40 of them. We have the pumps, and we're on back order right now, and the, some more, the ones we stick on the wall.
The walls, huh?
But, we do have pumps all over, in all of the cafeterias right now. Which, we should probably have them all the time, and kids should be washing their hands.
Please, do we have, here at the high school, I think at the two lower elementary schools, there's a, do they have the water bottle filler? Do we just have water fountains here, or do we have water bottle fillers here?
Here you have the water fountains, the bubblers. Most of the kids, I, we are washing those.
Okay.
That's part of the extra custodian, they do that during the daily walk-around, but now, it's being done probably every 30 minutes, every, probably on the hour. Most of the kids at the high school, I can say this, I don't really see them at the bubs, I see them with a bottle of water.
Yeah.
Down at the Keith, Central School, they have the hydration station, and at the Mitchell School. But if anybody has any questions, please call us, we do have information online. You can also go to the CDC website. You can also go to your local town's website for the local DPH, or you can go to the state.
Thank you.
That's what I have.
Thank you, Liz.
Thanks.
Next up, we have Strategic Plan Number Two, Socialal Emotional, with Karen Clifford and Matt Bosch. Mr. Bosch and Mrs. Clifford, welcome.
Hi. So I have several updates on Social Emotional to go over with you tonight. And the first thing that I want to talk about is a resource table that was put together by two of the high school guidance counselors, Mrs. Lyons and Mrs. Fahey. It was one of their SMART goals for last year. It is still in development, because I don't want to say that we have exhausted every resource that we could possibly put on this table, but I want to show you it on, that's why I have the website up tonight. It's called, the program that they use is called the Awesome Table. And what makes it awesome, if you're not familiar with it, is that it's searchable on several different categories. So, if you go to our website, and you go under Schools to the High School, right now, it's embedded under the High School Guidance Department, because it was two high school guidance counselors that put it together. We have expanded it for the district, so that when you go on the guidance page, on the right-hand side, this Community Resource Table. This is what comes up. It is searchable by category, as well as by grade level. So, for example, I can search for any resources that I might be interested in on, let's say, mood disorders, and I'm going to come up with 30. It can give me a link right to a resource. I can also look up, you know, anxiety, that's going to be my big segue, I've got to, there's 15 anxiety and depression meshed together, so that they're both searchable, they're going to both be searchable, either or. Or, if I am a central school parent, and I'm interested in, I can just search for the central school age-related, and this is why I say that it's still in development, because there's a lot of books and things that they use at the central school to address some of these issues, that those will be linked in. So all of the guidance counselors have access, in each of their buildings, to update these. So as resources change, or as we learn about new resources that are credible, that we want to put up there and share with the community. We do have some categories, social services, there's substance abuse, suicide, you know, there's quite a few, some vaping. So that's what they have put together. So I think that will be a great resource for the community.
Karen, can we get something out to families, that that's up there now? Or an EB, you know, EB notifications or whatever, at some point?
Yes, so that's going to be, oh, there's my horrible desktop, sorry. Yes, so, information is being sent out to two pads, it was given to all of the counselors, as I said, so if they're working, we're going to give people that.
I think the principals too.
Did I give you?
Teresa, the principals can put it in their memos, in their weekly...
Right, yeah.
Yes. They can do their weekly memos for the parents, and let them know.
So the next thing I wanted to let you know is about the social work interns that we have at the buildings. I do not have statistics on the Central School, because that intern has just recently started. But at the Mitchell School, we have an intern there that is there two days a week, and to date, she's had 11 referrals, which resulted in five open cases, but she's also, she's dealt with social skills, behavior anger management, anxiety, trauma being the highest topics for her. She's done 38 individual counseling sessions, 16 group counseling, had parent contact, staff consultation, and done 26 check-ins. And check-ins are something that are repetitive. The high school intern who's here three days a week, and has been here since September, has had 19 referrals, resulting in 12 open cases, which means that they're ongoing. She's dealt with more anger management, anxiety, and crisis. So you see the age difference of the different areas that they're dealing with. She's done 84 individual counseling sessions. She's done 62 counseling sessions for a crisis. So that was like an in-the-moment, as opposed to another just issue. She's done group counseling and parent contact also. She's done 97 staff consultations. So you see, that is what the high school intern is doing, as opposed to the middle school.
When you say staff consultation, Karen, is that staff looking for guidance on how to handle a particular situation, or a student, or...
Yes, yes, yes. And as well as they are going into classrooms and doing observations to help the, help the teacher with maybe some classroom management. It might be as easy as like, "This kid needs to not sit next to this kid, because they won't stop." Or, maybe that student is near the window, or just not close to instruction. So they're making those kinds of observations for the teachers.
Awesome, thank you.
And so the teachers are requesting that, some of the teachers are requesting.
That's great that they can do that.
Is this internship program ongoing, so that this is a position that's going to be filled next year with new interns?
Correct. So this is the program that I discussed last time, that we're working with North River Collaborative on. And I believe that what we have in the budget, there's a new grant that we just applied, we reapplied for a grant that we have that's paying for this, these interns. So we will continue with that until we can get them.
We're also offering one.
That was going to be my question, is why do we go with the two-day-a-week interns versus the three? I mean, is it just the cost of the supervision from North River?
So originally, we had two three-day here, and I thought we were going to get a three-day at the Mitchell School, and it turned out that the person that was available, that really fit, who is awesome, and Mr. Gentile will tell you, she's awesome, was only available the two days.
Okay. So it's more availability than what we would want? I mean, I've found in the past, the three-day-a-week interns are usually far, and not to speak about a specific person, but far better quality in general than the two-day-a-week interns, in terms of their ability to handle crises in the school, interact with parents, they're just better experienced.
And I would agree with you, but if you knew this woman, she's awesome.
Okay.
When do you find out, we just applied on the second grant, when do you find out about that?
I, I think it's like, it's on...
Ongoing, so, it was submitted last week in February?
No, you were before me, so I think you were the 15th.
February 15th, and then I thought one was the 26th, oh, that was the career one. So, and it just says, "Ongoing approval," so... I'm assuming they're going to review ones, and as they see ones that they're ready to approve, they'll, and then see what they have left for funding.
Those are from the State Department, from our Commonwealth.
And those ones were for three years, right? We were looking for funding for...
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
Thank you.
Yep. So this is, I just want to pass that down, please. This is the documentary, Angst, that I believe I mentioned a little while ago, but we are going forward with this. So I'm giving you the poster presentation, and at the bottom are all the different presentations that we're offering in East Bridgewater. We have three, well, two evening presentations at 7:00 PM that would like all parents, come with their students, without their students, faculty, anybody in the, in the district, to come and see. The documentary is about raising awareness about anxiety. It's a 56-minute film. The documentary includes interviews from teenagers that have had anxiety diagnosed, parents that have tried to work with their students about anxiety, professionals. Michael Phelps is also interviewed in the film, he's a mental health advocate, so he's part of this documentary. It provides resources, lists of responses or strategies the parents can use, so it's not just, "This is a problem," it really is, provides a lot of resources. In fact, the resources are so comprehensive, they are up on our resource directory, because there's, there was just so many of them, I couldn't even pick, so we just linked right to the, to this website. So hopefully, it will be well-attended. We will be showing all students in grades seven through 12 during the school day. We have one parent and community viewing that will be at 3:30 in the afternoon, in case the 7:00 is not a good viewing time. The documentary is appropriate for students aged 10 and up. We encourage 5th and 6th grade parents to come with their child to view with them, or we welcome parents to come on one night to do a pre-screening, and then bring their kids back another time. But when I asked the people if this was appropriate, for what age group it was appropriate for, they told me 10 and up, and that if you show it to parents, parents are going to say, "I want my kid to see this," and if you show it to the kids, the biggest response is, "I wish my parents could see this." So I think it will be very beneficial for both to see. And I think anxiety is, it's a, it's an issue that everybody faces at some point.
Would this also be shown to the 5th and 6th grade students at the Mitchell School?
So, we cannot, because the license is for five consecutive days, but it has to be shown at the same venue. So I can't even move it, I can't move it from the auditorium to the lecture hall, it has to be in the exact same, like, the same IP address, I guess is how they track it. So, that's why we set up the parent pre-screening, so that if their parent wanted to come and see, or they can check out the website, they can come and see it, or we really suggest that they come with their students to see. But this has been emailed out to all parents in grades seven through 12. The other buildings are also emailing, as well as introducing it to their faculty, so that faculty can come, whether or not they have a child, they're working with children that might have anxiety.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. That, I want to say thank you to the school committee, I'm sorry, I forget what, the policy subgroup that has approved the district curriculum accommodation plan. So now, this is going into effect, it's been given to all buildings. This is not an exhaustive list, but this is a list of a sampling of interventions that teachers can use in the classroom for any student at any time. So I think this is a valuable tool for teachers in the classroom, that allows them the flexibility to address needs that they see in the moment, in real time. It also falls in line with all our UDL principles and positive student responses. So that will be implemented for all parents. At student support meetings, at IEP meetings, 504 meetings. Any questions on that?
Yeah, we're just reviewing it.
Okay.
So, you're using these instead of ICAPs now?
Correct.
So, are you rolling over current ICAPs to DCAPs now? Do you have those meetings with parents, or is it just kind of new kids, new conversations that come up?
So it will, it will come up as an ICAP is reviewed. I know that the ICAPs are used at the lower grades more so than at the high school, they're very difficult to track at the high school. So the push has really been to, "Let's be on the same page as far as the district," so that this is really...
So this is really more of a secondary-level thing? Or you are, it is a district-wide?
It is district.
And this is for all classrooms?
So any teacher has the flexibility to use any of those strategies or accommodations for any student that they see in front of them.
And it doesn't matter if the student's on an IEP or not?
Correct. This is, this is what we're agreeing, as a district, that all students should have access to, without having to be on a, on a IEP, or even a 504. Right? Flexible seating, I mean, so many of them are really good teacher practice.
Has this gone out to the teachers yet?
So this has been given to all the building principals, and they're introducing it to their faculty. It's been something that I've been working with the counselors on. All of the building principals had the opportunity to review it with their leadership teams, to see if there was any additional accommodations that should be placed on there. And so, my hope is, the guidance counselors will go into parent meetings with these, or the teachers will feel comfortable using these, that if a parent wanted to identify, "This would be, would work best for my student," then it's right there in the teacher's room. And it's something that they, that all parents should know, that they can feel comfortable asking for. asking for, suggesting, recommending.
I think it looks great. Does anybody have any questions on this? Thank you.
So the last thing I have is that, I, grant, working with Dr. Williams, it's a career exploration grant. It is for three years, it services grades six through eight in career exploration, experiential opportunities, which creates a bridge into the high school career college vocational planning curriculum. I wrote in the grant, summer curriculum work, to extend the current STEAM lab lessons that are happening in sixth grade up into the seventh and eighth grade. So it's for three years, maximum of a hundred thousand dollars. The timeline that I was provided with, I submitted April, February twenty-eighth, the timeline was that finalists would be notified by early, early April, followed by site visits of the schools, and then the winners would be notified April thirtieth. Three years ago, when they did the first grant, because it is a three-year grant, the first year, they, they had about fifteen finalists that they supported financially. I found out yesterday that we are finalists.
Awesome, congratulations.
So we were notified well before the April, early April date, and they will be looking to do a site visit somewhere in the last two weeks of March. So I'll work with the building principals to coordinate what is the best time for us to do that. It's, I'm sorry.
Is it private or?
It's American Student Assistance, which is a nonprofit group, but they partnered with elementary, secondary ed, and it came to us that way. It came out to all of-
I've heard of them.
-school administrators. So-
I have.
I worked with Mrs. Cameron, who is our rock star in the STEAM lab at the Mitchell School, and she's, gave me a lot of good information, they were very impressed with our proposal, and I went for the full hundred thousand dollars, to the dime, to the penny.
Okay. What's the name of this grant?
It's an American Student Assistance Grant. It's middle school career exploration, and it was directed to us through the elementary and secondary ed website.
Thank you.
Great job.
Mm-hmm. That's it. That's all I got.
Nice job.
Mm-hmm.
And just to address, Mr. Shea on the pie-in-the-face jars, just to alleviate your fears, there are two jars in the main office here at the Junior Senior High School, and just to update, Mr. Sylvia's jar is empty and mine is filled to the, to get my pie in the face. Actually, I have a nickel, I think, I saw it in there today, so.
So these jars, just kids just come and put money in the jar?
We had, we had parents actually putting it in conferences.
I bet you, you did. I bet you, you did.
You should put yourself up for that next time.
I think we should totally have a jar in the superintendent's office.
It will be tomorrow.
For Dr. Williams.
For Dr. Williams.
Maybe there should be one jar for everybody.
I think you should set that up tomorrow.
With a hundred dollar bill.
No, I walked into the main office, and suddenly a five-dollar bill was there, and Mr. Boat accused me of putting it there.
I found out-
You're the only one that walked in.
So I'm gonna talk about school-wide discipline, and I'm glad it falls under SEL, because school-wide discipline is part of the learning process. For example, you know, we don't institute consequences with kids, we institute supports. We don't talk to kids, we have conversations with kids, so it's, it all falls in line with the learning process, school discipline with the kids, and I know we all believe in that philosophy. Before the coronavirus was dominating the headlines in schools, vaping was obviously talked about heavily. Just wanna update some of the things on the vaping incidents. We had a real spike in January. I don't think the vaping activity was up, I think our vigilance was really more emphasized in December, especially January. Since January, we have seen a dramatic decrease in vaping incidents through our vigilance. I think the word is getting out that we're in and out of bathrooms, we're in hallways more, so I think the behavior is down as far as vaping. I think a lot of the kids that, the majority of kids who are not and have been frustrated with going on in the building are very happy to see us being more vigilant with the vaping here at the school. We are, we have been working a lot of outside programs, have assessed, there's a, there's a substance addiction problem with some of our kids, and we have a lot of programs that we've accessed as part of the supports we put in place for kids that have been very effective. Ms. Anderson, our district behavior therapist, Mr. Boats, and Ms. Doherty, our behavior specialists, have been working very hard, being very proactive in the halls, classrooms, common areas, cafeterias, cafeteria dissuading the vaping behavior, so I really wanna thank and acknowledge them. Also, our in-school support center, we're using it a lot more for things other than discipline, to put supports in for kids that are not in there for discipline-related. For example, if they've been on extended medical leave, and they need kind of a home base of catching up on their academic work, we've been using the in-school support center, so it's not just a place for disciplinary reasons, which is a great utilization of that resource. We've seen a lot of success in proactive mediations with kids, because our, our physical confrontations on campus have been extremely low this year, which is, which is, I'm very happy to see, but we've been very proactive in having mediations with kids and communicating with families for the year, and I think it's been very effective. To the thrill of the students, our after-school detention program is up and running. I know they're all very excited about that, but it's just, it's an additional option we have in our progressive discipline model that we wanna establish in the school, so it just gives us another option besides just the in-school support center. And we give kids opportunities to go and see teachers if they need some academic support, make up tests, quizzes, get some extra help, because we always encourage kids, you don't have to just sit in detention halls, so to speak, you can go see teachers after school as long as you're there, and we do notify the teachers when their kid's gonna be after school, so they see them, I know you're after school today until whatever time, why don't you go by and make up that math test, or get some extra help here? So, we're using it to support kids in the classroom as well, which is, which is good to see. And lastly, on student safety, I know one of the first things that Superintendent Legault and I, I think it was like my second day, she said, you need to fix that traffic mess out there in, in the morning. And through the efforts of Mr. Sylvia, SRO Connors, and Kachatori, and from what I'm hearing from parents, the traffic pattern in the morning is much better than it was last year, and I especially wanna thank the parents. Great example today, Officer Connors is at a training all week, so she's normally up at the football field pulling people up to get them moving up, and I was afraid whether not here this week, people are gonna be stopping short and would be backing it up at the Plymouth, but they moved up like they normally would, like nobody was there, so the traffic just kept on moving very smoothly. So I wanna thank the parents and kids who are really cooperating, because that's really improved from last year from what I've been told, so.
It's really smooth in the morning.
Parents have done a great job, you know, so I wanna thank them.
Well, your arm's gotta be tight by seven fifteen.
They are by the time I come in, yeah, so, but they did a nice job.
It works.
So, that's all I have.
Thank you.
There may be some physical altercation tomorrow morning in my office, so you should probably come down there.
We'll do a mediation at seven o'clock.
You can break, yep.
No, you get in traffic, seven fifteen.
I'll be in there at seven thirty.
Great job on, thank you. Great job on the grant, I can't wait to hear if we get it or not.
I know, so hopefully, we get that site visit set up in the last two weeks in March, and the whole, their whole timeline is hopefully pushed up, and we'll know early, and they'll start to disperse some money in June.
You put, you tell?
Yep. So, I'll let you know.
Thank you.
Thank you, good luck with it. And Mr. Phelan is not with us this evening. So next up, we have Mrs. Kate Byrne, principal of Central School, welcome.
Good evening.
Why don't you guys all pull your chairs up, and then you're right there, and-
We have Mr. Gentile of Mitchell School, and Mr. Sylvia, I always wanna call you Silva.
It'll be, it'll be a seamless transition.
Mr. Sylvia, of the principal of the high school. Welcome, all three of you.
Thank you, thanks for having us.
Thank you very much. The superintendent had asked us to talk about attendance, so just trying to give you an idea of what our attendance has been over the last couple of days, but I, you know, also taking a look at the last couple of months. Cold and flu season, as we've already discussed, does hit the schools, and for us, we've probably seen that impact from January, February, and into March. So our numbers right now, and we're looking at our rate so far for the month, we've only, we're like ten days in, our rate for attendance is, we're at ninety-four point five percent. February, ninety-four point two-five, January, ninety-five fourteen. So when I look at a daily rate, the range so far for this month, our high point was actually, this past Monday, we had thirty-nine students absent. The low point was twenty-four, which was the beginning of the month, we're averaging about thirty students absent on a daily basis, and that's relatively consistent over the last month of February. February, our range, the low was eighteen, high of forty-four, but I would say our peak flues were, you know, late January into February. So just to give you an idea, we have not seen a dramatic increase as of late with the recent news, obviously something for us to still monitor, but it's pretty consistent with our typical cold and flu season at this point in time.
Like in, usually in September, October, and November, you don't see that, it's not that high, is it?
No, I could tell you, I was looking, and our attendance rate, September, ninety-eight point four, October, ninety-seven six, November, ninety-seven, December, ninety-seven percent. So really, January, February, March, this is our typical cold and flu season. So hopefully, we start to see it decline. I don't know if we'll see something different this year based on the current circumstances, but right now, it's relatively typical. I don't know about the other buildings, but that's what we've seen so far. And we have been very diligent about the hand washing and making sure that students and faculty are all aware, and we do appreciate the extra, the sodium throughout the day. Definitely does make a big difference. And they are definitely making sure that they monitor the hydration stations as well, because students do frequent those. The next thing Liz had asked us to discuss was to talk to you a little bit about growth data. So I have some MAP data, as well as DIBELS data, just to share with you. I'll pass these on, if you don't mind just taking one and passing them down. Just to start off, thank you for sharing. I think I made eight copies, I wasn't really sure how many we would need.
Thank you.
I'll wait till everyone gets a copy.
This is pretty good.
Yes. DIBELS stands for the Dynamic Indicators of Basic Early Literacy Skills. It's an assessment that we use K to two at Central School, and we use it for fall, winter, and spring benchmark assessments, as well as progress monitoring for students throughout the year. It really dives deep into the basic foundational skills that students need to become readers. And it's also, the DIBELS eighth edition is also a tool for us to be able to help diagnose potential reading disabilities in students. And so, I just wanna, I know it might be a lot to look at, but this gives you this top sheet in all the colors, the beginning of the year data for grades K one and two, and this is regarding students proficiency levels with all these reading sub-tests. You'll also notice, if you go to the bottom of the page, there's a legend, and the legend indicates by color, students and where we perceive, based on their performance, their level of reading skill. So for example, you'll see students that are red are students that we would say aren't, need intensive supports, that yellow are strategic supports, and then green is what we call core support, and a core student is somebody who is proficient meeting benchmark. And then you'll see this blue category, which is new with the DIBELS eighth edition called, it's the core support plus. So it's basically students who have reached benchmark, but are well above benchmark in their performance. So what I'll guide you through, we can, you can look at it by grade, but our goal is always to increase student proficiency and increase their growth. So compared from the beginning of the year, in kindergarten, for example, if you combine our greeting, our green and our blues, basically those are students who are proficient. In kindergarten, in the fall, we had thirty-nine percent of students who were proficient meeting benchmark at the beginning of the year. If you take a look now at our winter, January scores, we now have sixty-three percent of students meeting proficiency. So that's a great increase. What you can see is our numbers for those that are intensive, those are declining, our numbers for those in the strategic category, those are declining, and our students in core are increasing. That's always our goal. In first grade, we had fifty-five percent of the students proficient in the basic literacy skills. Now we have seventy-one percent come mid-year who are reaching benchmark. And realize that this benchmark is a moving target, it isn't static, it isn't the same number in the fall as it, as it is in the winter, that these benchmarks are also moving and progressing, so seeing students grow and increasing their proficiency level is wonderful. So for example, let's say DIBELS recommends you need to grow ten points in the area of oral reading fluency. So if a student only grows that ten, they haven't changed a category. So if they were strategic and grew ten, they're still strategic. So you have to go well above that benchmark, or that DIBELS recommended growth rate in order to move categories. And that's really our goal, as we're trying to develop students as readers. And so you can see in second grade, the beginning of the year, we had seventy percent of students at the beginning of the year proficient, which is a really nice solid number to start the year. Right now, for January, we have eighty-two percent of students. As a whole, when we look at the school as a whole, K to two, basically, the beginning of the year, we had fifty-four percent of students reaching benchmark, and now for winter, we have increased that to seventy percent school-wide. So obviously, our, our goal is to continue to have that growth for all students, and just realize, again, those targets, those benchmarks, those are increasing in expectation as well. So that's just to give you a little bit about our DIBELS growth, and those are our reading skills. We also do have the MACE, which is a new addition to the DIBELS eighth, which does have a piece of comprehension. So we're really trying to break the code for students, develop them as fluent readers, and then also dive into their comprehension. Behind that, what you will see is a look at our school data and our growth from fall to winter for MAP. The first bar graph you'll see is for math, and what you'll notice is, and I'm sure you've seen presentations over the years since we've been using MAP, and Mrs. McPartlin is an expert in the field, and I'm sure she's shared it with you as well, that gold diamond is the norm projected growth rate that NWA MAP projects based on student performance. So from fall to winter, they project that students are gonna grow a certain number of points in their RIT score over time. So, your goal is to try to meet or exceed that projected growth rate. So in the area of mathematics, you can see in kindergarten, we are above that projected growth rate. You can see that diamond, we're above it. In the area of first grade, you can see, we're quite not, we're not there yet. When you look at the data in the comparison, for example, the projected growth for kindergarten, they projected we'd grow eleven point seven RIT points. As a grade, they grew twelve point eight, that's why you can see we've exceeded that projected growth. In the area of first grade, the projected growth was twelve point two, we fell short of that, we were at nine point nine. In second grade, the recommended growth was ten point one, that was the projection, and the observed growth in grade two was eleven point two. So, those are all wonderful areas to touch base on with teachers, and what we also know is that from now to the end of the year, there are new projections, and there's new growth expectations for all students. This also brings about great talking points with all staff, and you'll take another look, when you look at reading, you'll see some slightly different projections and achievement levels and growth rates. So for kindergarten here, our projected growth for reading was ten point six, the observed growth was twelve point two. Again, excellent, we met and exceeded that projected growth rate, and now when we're looking at first grade, the projected growth was eleven seven, first grade came in at eight seven at this point, for the winter benchmark data, well, the winter assessment. And then in second grade, you can also see a vast difference between what we saw in math, but in second grade here, the projected growth was ten, the observed growth was six point eight. So in looking at all of this information and reviewing this data with teachers, and I think I shared when we were here, I don't think the last time, but the time before that, maybe that was in January, that I hold data and vision meetings with all staff, these are talking points, both the DIBELS data, as well as the MAP data. And behind there, I'm sharing a sample of what we call this student growth summary and a quadrant report. Every teacher has these quadrant reports for reading and in math, and what these quadrants also do, it's another way for teachers to see their data and their students. So, what you can't see is that these little plus marks, those are students. And so, this is specifically math, this one here. So if you look at fifty percent, at that fifty mark, if you're looking horizontally and above, those are all students, all those little pluses are students who met or exceeded their projected growth rate. If they've really met their projected growth rate, they're really hovering usually around that fifty mark. That's about meeting the projected growth, that's that norm. Any pluses below there, both in that pink and yellow side, are students who did not meet their projected growth rate. What you can see as they move up, you can see their growth. Students that are closer to that- up, you can see their growth. Students that are closer to that baseline, or hovering down if they're down by zero, those are students that may not have shown growth at all. And so then those are all things that we dive deep to examine and discuss with teachers. So just so that you know, when we take this vehicle, this quadrant report, and if you go to the next page behind here, it then leads us to individual student conversations most of the time. And that's when we access something called the student profile. So here, you know, you toggle on one of those students, and now we're digging deep, and we're looking individually at student performance. So here, this happened to be in the area of math. If you take a look, and I know it might be a lot to look at, and we look at these frequently, so forgive me if it's, if you have any questions, just stop me along the way. When you look here at the instructional areas, this is this student's individual performance by goal area and instructional area. You can see that they have an individual strength, which is measurement and data. You can see by that score of two hundred and one is their RIT score. And you can see that their individual weakness in this area is geometry, because their RIT score is one eighty-six. As we talk with teachers and look to maximize student growth and making sure that all students are growing, whether they are already deemed to be a benchmark student, or they're already deemed to be on grade level, what we know is it's not about that. It's about making sure every student is learning and growing every year. So if you, if you come in a proficient reader, we still expect you to grow. If you come in solid on grade level with math, well, that's fantastic. Then it's our job to challenge you and provide you opportunity that you're ready to access. And these reports and forms, so now the student profile, and then if you click, for example, deeper into the student profile, we get to what we call the learning continuum. And that breaks down, well, I'll show you on the backside, that page should be double-sided for you. You can also examine the student's growth over time. So I did provide that map for you. So you can see where the student is increasing and showing their growth. It's natural, and NWA will share this, for their, for dips to occur for students. And you can see that, this one sample I provided with you, you do see a dip from spring to fall, from kindergarten into first grade, and then that projection of growth and how it continues. It is not uncommon for us to sometimes see those dips, especially over the summer. And we definitely notice dips when we change assessments from the K two to two five. But when we take a dig, a deeper look now for this specific student, in order to support the teacher and the instruction within the classroom, we then can find individual recommendations, which is this next sheet here that you'll see, that links to what we call the learning continuum, and that's the standards. So now the teacher can take this information to say, wow, you know, Johnny is excelling, and I need to do more to help him continue to learn and grow in the area of math. So now I can take this learning continuum and say, oh, well, just because in second grade, it shows that he's ready for, you know, multiplication. He's ready to move on to some skills that are not in the second grade curriculum. But that is the expectation. But when we look at that MAP data, these are the types of conversations that we are having with our teachers to support them and the students in the classroom. And so I just wanted to kind of give you an overview of that's how we talk about growth, and that's how we move forward. And every data point is a learning opportunity, and there's things to celebrate, and then there's things sometimes that we need to sit back and say, do we see trends in the data? Do we see an area that maybe we're missing the mark, or how can we do better for this student, or for this population of students? So just to kind of give you an overview, that's where we stand as of winter. I really think of that winter as more of a midpoint touch base. The real telling view is when we see spring data, and we look from fall to spring, that's the really good stuff. And not that we don't enjoy this winter data, but we really, it's good data to see fall to spring. Another thing I would like to share, just in looking at the data overall, I had, I enjoy all the conversations that I have with the staff regarding data. And over the many years, the dialogue has shifted, and the mindset of all the staff has really grown. And I do want to share that, I was meeting with one teacher specifically, who was a little disappointed about her reading data. And we were discussing it and talking about it. And she was sharing that she knows that she has a class where she needs to bring it every day, that she needs to, you know, stand on her head if she has to, but she needs to be engaging. She needs to find ways for them to move, ways for them to interact in the curriculum that's hands-on. And she knows that about them. And that's great, because that's what our expectation would be, right? And what she shared was that, what we typically do is that the winter data, our assessment timeline starts that first full week in January when we come back after winter, after December break. And she had shared that the reading assessment is always the first one that we do. Dove in, off they went, and she was thinking, my gosh, you know, I know we've worked really hard, and I'm just surprised by the outcome. I really thought that at this point, you know, the students weren't in a better place. This isn't what I see typically of their daily performance. And so what this teacher did is she talked about how the students performed and looked at their growth individually and as a whole, from fall to winter, in the area of reading. And students were able to see, not specifically who, but could see the growth, who achieved high growth, and maybe where everybody else was, but not by name, by a bunch of dots. And talking about what strategies did people use that showed good growth. Oh, I took my time. I went back and checked my answers. You know, I reread it, and all these great strategies. So then she invited the students, if you want to know which dot you are, you know, come up and talk to me. So she said throughout the day, every student wanted to know. They wanted to know where they were. They wanted to know, there isn't a student that doesn't want to do better, and to like beat their record, like that's very common. And so that motivation, that time of goal setting, then she did the math map. Granted, we're talking two different skills, but I will share with you, the projected growth rate, the met growth rate in reading was thirty-five percent. Thirty-five percent of her students. And she was disappointed with that, and I can understand that. After taking the time to goal set and reengage students and talk about the importance and the power behind it, and what they, what do they really want to show that they know, now granted, it's now math, but I'll tell you, there's power and motivation. Eighty-four point five percent of her students met or exceeded it in math. Yes, we're talking math and reading, different skills, but I'll tell you, the power in taking the time to set our students up for success, invaluable. So I've already shared and decided that as a school, Central School, will not start our MAP testing that first full week in January anymore. We're going to take that first full week to get everybody ready and prepared and goal set and cheerlead. And that's what we'll do next year, because it's so important. Lots of variables involved in assessments. I'm not saying that's the only one, but I thought that that was a powerful example. Just a couple of quick things, just parent teacher conferences this week at Central School. We look forward to seeing everybody in our book fair. We have our version of March Madness, which is actually a tournament of books, which is our literacy incentive that's underway for four weeks. And each week, we feature an author and two books. And at the end of each week, we have a winning book. And by the end, we'll have one super awesome book that the school will decide. Students have been involved in creating little videos and reflecting on their favorite book and explaining why it was their favorite, and why they think it should be chosen. And that's a wonderful link that we're sending out to all the Central Schools. So each week, the first week was last week, we had second grade students talking about what was their favorite book and why. This week, we'll feature first grade. Next week, it'll be kindergarten, and the week after that, it'll be preschool. And so we're looking forward to that. And one last thing, just kindergarten registration. The packets are available online, as well as in the Central School office. Right now, we're anticipating roughly about a hundred and forty students.
And what do we have this year?
This year, we have a hundred and fifty, a hundred and fifty-one. We keep going, keep losing some, losing some.
Thank you. That was a lot of great information.
We're waiting for Mr. Gentile's charts.
Well, because I knew Mrs. Byrne was going to be so diligent, I'm going to refer to those same documents for the Mitchell School, but just try and give you a summary. We're doing a lot of similar things, I think, throughout the district with regard to the MAP, because I think we've all had experiences that have been successful and tried to share those. So in all seriousness, a lot of the practices that are happening at the Central School, we've either continued with or adopted when we, you know, found out that they were having success with it, or vice versa with the junior, senior high school. Like Mrs. Byrne said, the real marker of success with regard to the assessments, from my perspective, is the growth from fall to spring. At the winter point in time, is really a great opportunity for our teachers to access the information, to see where their students are, where the curriculum that they've brought their students through to this point has, has brought their classrooms to, and then to make a determination as to what things may need to happen, or may need to happen differently, as kids finish out the remaining part of the school year in hopes of maximizing their growth. With respect to the two tests that the kids are taking at the Mitchell, the reading MAP test and the math MAP test, in general terms, we've seen some variability with regard to students as a grade level, meeting those projected growth, the growth projections in, in both reading and math. So to get a little bit more specific, with regard to reading, all of our grade levels, with the exception of grade five, either met or exceeded the projected growth with respect to the reading MAP test. Just to give you some perspective, however, when we talk about the projected growth rates, in reading, the, the top projection for one of the grade levels was a growth of seven point seven RIT score points. And on the low end, it was three point four RIT score points. So we're talking about a really small window here. And also, when we look at grade levels that maybe didn't meet the projections, there weren't any instances where grade levels missed the projection by, by more than a point. So if they fell short of the projected growth, it was by one point or less. So in general terms, that's a good thing. That being said, you know, we want to meet or exceed those, those targets. So we are looking at, in, you know, in some of the grade levels where there was consistency with exceeding the targets, what's going on there that maybe we can apply at another grade level. And it may be things like Mrs. Byrne said, with, with real, respect to goal setting, the environment that kids are taking the test in. In some instances, we've had students take the test in shorter chunks, as opposed to just sitting down and banging out the whole test. So we're taking a look at, was that a variable that we should be looking at and putting into the prescription for how we have the kids take the test? So again, with regard to the reading, more consistent in general across the four grade levels, with, with again, just grade five falling short of the projection. But again, the, the projected growth for grade four was a growth of four point two points, and they had a growth of three point seven points. So they were point five points away from meeting that projection. So again, small window.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So when you get this data, is it possible, I've never seen the test before, but is it possible, when you're looking at the data, to know specifically what area they fell short in, like, for example, like an algebraic equation, or maybe fractions, or what, like, that's just an example?
Yep. So the information that I'm sharing with you right now, I would refer to as grade level, level of information. Then we take it down to the classroom level of information, where we're looking at, with a teacher, that group of students. And then from there, we look at the student level. At the student level, you can really see, and Mrs. Byrne referred to the learning continuum, where you can look at how a student performed and the specific skill areas that they either need additional support in, or it also will, will direct you to what new skill areas those students are ready to move on to. So yes, absolutely, you can see specifically where they need additional support. You can also see really clearly where they've excelled. And that's really helpful as well, because if you know a student has a gap in a certain area, and they have a particular other skill down solid, let's make sure we direct our efforts to the right area. You know what I'm saying? So absolutely. In math, three of the four grade levels fell short of the projected targets. Grade three exceeded the projected target. There are a number of variables that are related to that. One, I do think that, that Bear is mentioning is, from last year to this year, the math program that we adopted last year slightly changed. We use Ready Classroom. Last year, it was Ready Math. This year, it's Ready Classroom. Some slight modifications to that. I think that has led to a need for some adjustments with regard to instruction and just rolling out the program. Teachers are still in, sort of in the infancy of utilizing that program, and there are a lot of challenges to it. It's very rigorous. And I mean that in a really good way. Additionally, though, there are other factors that we're, we're trying to take a look at, you know, when we, when we get away from the grade level of information and start to look at classroom level, in classrooms where we're seeing a lot, a lot more growth than others, or students where we're seeing a lot more growth than others, we're trying to look at, what are the factors that are contributing to that? You know, a couple of things that we're, we're looking at now with teachers and grade levels would include things like, you know, trying to identify what's working and what isn't, what instructional strategies are providing consistent results. That's something that we're really focused on right now. And it relates back to, you know, our UDL initiative. One of the things that we're focusing on at the Mitchell School between now and April vacation with our teachers, in terms of trying to give feedback and trying to highlight instances of this, is setting goals and objectives with our students, and heightening the importance of goals and objectives within the classroom. So that may relate to something like the MAP test and goal setting around that. It could also mean, you know, sixth graders meeting with either their teachers or their guidance counselors and setting academic goals for themselves, and really connecting to those goals to make them important and to really make them work for it. Because as, as Mrs. Byrne mentioned, you know, a real consistent motivator for kids is like to try and beat your own record. It's amazing the response that kids present to that challenge. So that's, that's something that we're looking at. How do classroom dynamics impact student success? You know, simple things. What's the classroom arrangement like? How often are kids always in the same spot? Does that have an impact on their day-to-day performance? Does that have an impact on when they're taking an assessment? Should we be looking at those factors? So that's something we're evaluating. So just trying to look at the variables, you know, I think one of the things that's a challenge for us as educators is we work with people, and they present us with a lot of different challenges and variables, some of which we can control and some of which we can't. So I try to continue to preach with our staff to stay focused on the things that we can control, and to see, you know, are there things that we can adjust, or things that we can put into place so that our students are in an environment to be successful. We're always trying to get better. But I can say with consistency, although we may not have met projections in some areas, we are growing at all grade levels. And, and I intend that, you know, we'll continue to do that. And my hope and expectation is that those rates of growth will increase. And I'll be anxious to see what the results look like in the spring, and certainly be back to share that information at that point. Any questions about MAP?
Just, and this goes to Central too. If parents wanted to see more specific reports like what you've shared with us tonight, can we get those on request? I mean, I know you don't send home the full packet on every kid, but some of this is really interesting, and I think parents would want to be able to go over it with their kids.
Yeah. I know at least that Mitchell School, at this point of the school year, if a parent was to request some additional information, we have provided it in a lot of instances. We also utilize it in a lot of parent meetings. Teachers will, will utilize it as well. Generally speaking, though, however, in terms of like a mass mailing type situation, we generally wait till the spring, because at that point, we've now gotten to sort of like a point of closure with regard to the curriculum and the opportunity for the students to take the assessment. So it's a little bit more of a finalized version of the information. Whereas this, at this stage, it's more of a, a working document that we're using to help direct the curriculum. But absolutely, in simple terms, if it was requested, absolutely we'd provide it.
Thank you.
Are you going to talk about MAP at all before you?
Yes, I am.
It's more of a ten-hour question.
Just briefly, with regard to attendance, very similar to Central School, did a brief analysis of things, both within the last couple of weeks of school, the last couple of months, and then a quick reflection on where we're at this point last year. Over, since the, we returned from February break to today, just again, we have six hundred and forty-three students at Mitchell. The highest number of absences we had over that twelve-day period was fifty-three absences, which represents eight percent of our student body. The average over that twelve-day period was thirty-nine absences. The average over that same time period last year was actually forty-one absences. So we're a little bit lower on average, but that fifty-three on that, on that particular day is, is somewhat high. When we hit a ten percent level on any given day, that would be a day that I would start to think that maybe there was something larger going on that we should look, look at and maybe work with the, the nursing staff, or whatever it might be. Monthly total, the monthly average for February was ninety-three point seven percent. So far in March, we're right at about the same level. At the end of the month, we have an attendance meeting, at which point, we will be taking a little bit more thorough look at how things have compared from September to now on a monthly basis relative to the last couple of years. So I can certainly update you further. Different people have different pieces of that particular assignment. So once we pull that all together, I'd be happy to, to share that with the committee. But generally speaking, I think we're right on target, you know, in terms of where we usually are at this point of the year. We see a trend We see a trend similar to the Central School where, you know, we start off with, with real solid attendance at the beginning of the year and this sort of a decline as we get into this season, and then we see the sort of an upswing to finish the school year off when the weather gets better. So I intend that, you know, we'll probably see that. The extra custodian definitely is, is a welcome addition. I can attest to the fact that literally the only thing this person was doing at the Mitchell School has been wiping down surfaces, spraying surfaces, and really just being focused on that and trying to identify high-traffic areas and things of that nature. So that's been a welcome addition. We do have conferences coming up this week, Wednesday through Friday, and looking forward to, you know, seeing parents and parents having the opportunity to come in and talk with teachers about how their students are doing. Report cards did go home with Mitchell School students today. So if you didn't see one, you should have a conversation with your child. Or if for some reason it didn't make it to you for some mysterious reason, we'll certainly be happy to facilitate getting that to you. They are posted on the portal as well, but we do print the hard copy of the report card. And so hopefully, parents have had an opportunity to see those and that'll certainly be a focal point for conferences in the coming couple of days. Just one other thing I wanted to mention, on, just to save the date, we're firming up all the details, but on April sixteenth, we are going to be having a presentation at the Mitchell School, which will be open to all parents in the district. It's from the MARK Center, that's the Massachusetts Aggression Reduction Center, which is out of Bridgewater State University, under the direction of Dr. Englander. Dr. Englander will be coming to do a presentation for parents about bullying and cyberbullying. Prior to that, our students in grades six through twelve will be completing a survey so that when Dr. Englander comes to present, she will have data from our students to refer to in addition to data that they've collected throughout the work that they do on an ongoing basis.
What time is this happening on the sixteenth?
Pardon?
What time on the sixteenth?
Firming up the time and all of those details. We just wanted to make sure we had the date. And I would expect within the next couple of days, we'll be sending out a save the date that will have the time. I would anticipate probably six-thirty-ish, between the six and seven range, and it'll be at the Mitchell School in the auditorium.
Thank you.
All right.
And I spoke with Mrs. Verasso this morning, so daycare will be provided that evening for parents as well.
Great.
Well, good.
Well, it's held at Mitchell School, but any?
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for having us, listening to my colleagues. We're a lot more novice at the MAP testing at the junior, senior high school. It's something that's really entrenched with our junior high students because they're coming up, having done it, well-versed in it. High school's a little newer. It's something that Dr. Williams, myself, Mrs. McPartland have all decided to really focus on, especially this year going forward with our high school students. So we established a baseline of, our goal is, as a school, fifty-five percent growth across the board. So it was a little higher. We, we, Mrs. McPartland and I discussed that a couple of weeks ago because we're low on that end. However, we, we do realize that the buy-in, and it's the reason why we, Mrs. McPartland sent out all that information to our families about the MAP testing and why it's important and what it does for us. So as far as the staff goes, we had a faculty meeting a month ago that really focused on, you know, the importance of MAP and why we want it to be a part of our culture, really focusing on data and how data can assist our teaching practices as well as our students' growth and success. So we focused with staff on individualizing learning with the MAP data, providing resources and interventions for students, and creating conversations amongst colleagues. Best practices, myself and Mrs. McPartland are going to start going around to our departments during their common planning or our teams in the junior high level to really engage them with their individual students and their, their, their individual growth. Overall, this evening, I brought seventh grade math. Overall, all our, our two teams showed a fifty percent growth in seventh grade math. And again, we had several individual students who didn't complete it. It's, but most of, mostly, it was, we had out of the groups, one, two, we had four groups that exceeded the fifty-five percent target that we had, but the average was fifty percent. Our seventh grade English, we also had three groups achieve fifty-five percent or better. However, it was a forty-two percent growth in seventh grade English. And I was actually with the seventh grade team, both teams, the other day, and they were very, great conversation was taking place about some of the strategies that teachers were using in, in, in the classroom. So it, at that level, it was really excellent to hear those conversations being taking place at that point. As far as eighth grade goes, our eighth grade math, probably the most competitive group in this building is eighth grade math teachers and our eighth grade English teachers because they had established a whole competition with the kids. The winning group received a ice cream sundae party, so, which was won by Mrs. Romaine's class. And she achieved in, in, her average was fifty-seven point nine growth, percent growth. So she won the overall in the eighth grade, so everyone now is gearing up, we're going to spring, we're going to beat her. So she's got the target on her back. Eighth grade math, the average was thirty-nine percent growth. And if you know our, our two eighth grade math teachers, Mrs. Craven and Mrs. Isom, and probably two of the most competitive individuals and two of the probably best individual instructors for math with, with strategies and things like that. So they, they're students now at this point. Again, great conversations taking place. Our English, the average was fifty-one percent growth, which included Mrs. Romaine's fifty-seven point nine percent growth. So again, the, the teams are having great, talking about strategies that they can best utilize for, for what works best for them, for their students, things like that. So that's, it's really working out. At the ninth grade level, our ninth grade English teachers, which we met a couple of weeks ago with our, our English teachers about the MAP testing. So Mrs. McPartland and I are actually going to be joining their common planning time next week to really go over individual, down by individual teacher. It was a forty-four percent growth. Three of those classes out of our seven classes, ninth grade English, achieved fifty-five percent or better. So it's a good start, looking for better over, during the spring testing. Absolutely.
You were saying that MAP was a little more new to the high school? Is this the first year that nine through twelve has done MAP? What grades are we even doing MAP?
Well, MAP was, in English, is done seven through nine. Math was done across the board, seven to twelve. Mostly seven through eleven. We're really focusing on that data. So, but yeah, as far as the, the ten, eleven, twelfth graders, it's something that we adopted and we are pushing incredibly. And it's, it's a good baseline for us to look at it and really start those conversations with, with those departments to say, okay, we need to, we need to do better. We need to utilize this data to enhance our students' academic performances and their experiences, which I think is important. As far as the high school math, so we have, obviously, we have different subjects. We have algebra, geometry, Algebra II, integrated math. So it was, we have set it up in those specific areas. So in Algebra I, and we included the eighth grade numbers in this as well because we have a lot of eighth graders who are also taking Algebra I. It showed a thirty percent growth overall. There were three groups out of the ten classes that we offered that showed the fifty-five percent mark or better. Our geometry class, classes, which are nine and tenth graders, showed a fifty-one percent growth. Again, we had four groups in that out of the, the nine classes that we offer in geometry that showed fifty-five percent or better. Algebra II, which are our tenth graders and eleventh graders, probably showed the, the best growth. The average was fifty-seven percent. However, out of the eleven Algebra II offerings, seven of them achieved fifty-five percent or better. So that was a really great focus in, in, in meeting with the MAP. We haven't met with the math department yet, but we have it broken down. Mrs. McPartland did a great job breaking it down per teacher by student. So we have those ready to go and to discuss. We're meeting with the students overall tomorrow to give them their individual MAP, their winter MAP results during Viking Block. So it's going to break down exactly, as you said, specifically what areas they're strong in, what areas they're weak in, and hopeful, and that will generate conversations with staffing about strategy. So that really works out well.
Will they be bringing these papers home?
They will.
They should be.
They should be. Hopefully, I won't be picking them up.
We'll know to look for them.
We'll know to look for them. So as far as-
Oh, sorry. Would you be sending out an email to let people know the papers are coming home?
I can do that. I will do that. I was going to wait till Friday for the overall update, but I can do that tomorrow. That's not a problem. So, again, we are really trying to cultivate an atmosphere that MAP is essential for not just the students but for teaching and for instruction. It's only going to help us identify interventions, strategies, individualize for students, differentiate, and find strengths and weaknesses. It goes hand-in-hand with our UDL concept that we've adopted as a district. You know, there are many ways to get to the, the goal, and I think that's something. The more we do it at the junior, senior high school, the, I think the more comfortable people will be and especially if myself and Mr. Bosch, we're really going to push it. We're going to go to these CPT meetings and really, you know, and generate the conversation so it becomes, inbred into what we do here. So as far as, any questions on the MAPs?
When does data come out into the spring?
What?
The spring test is, I believe, April, is May, early May, I believe. So.
So historically, the results, as I think Mr. Gentile had said, once we have all three testing windows completed in the spring, they've gone home in the progress reports or report cards at the end of the year. And that's when they get sent home to the parents. So, and if I can just quickly interject to Mr. Sylvia's point, although we have been utilizing the MAP at the junior, senior high school, it does look different because not all teachers assess in the MAP. It's in English, seven, eight, and nine, and it's in math, eight, seven, eight, potentially nine if they take algebra or geometry, potentially ten if they're in Algebra II. So there's been that inconsistency. The other piece of it is, teachers are teaching multiple sections. So they have potentially four, five classrooms of students of data that they're looking at as opposed to Central School, it's one set of students' data. At the Mitchell School, it could be two sets of students' data. Because unlike most other standardized tests, the MAP assessment isn't an achievement test. It doesn't tell us what the students have learned already. It tells us what they're ready to learn. So if we're not looking at the data, if we're not talking about the data and we're not specifically making a plan for how to use that data in our instruction, it's not going to impact the scores. And it's really difficult to carve out that time when you have a hundred kids or more that you're looking to analyze that data. So I appreciate the fact that Mr. Sylvia and Mr. Bosch are now being a little bit more deliberate than we've been in years past with having those conversations and having teachers really look at the data to see what skills are students ready to learn and being able to look at their instruction in their classroom and utilize those UDL components so that they can figure out ways for how can I work with this pocket of students because they're ready to go in this direction? And how do I secure opportunities for students to reinforce skills that I might have already taught, but they weren't ready to learn and now they are? And then the other piece of that to Kiara's point a couple of months ago, students at this level really can have more engagement than they have had in the past. And it, you know, it was nice to hear that students want to know, like, why are we taking this? What is the benefit to it? And as Mrs. Byrne pointed out, even at the age of five and six, their engagement does have a positive impact. So it's tomorrow during Viking Block. We sent out information to all the students, seven through twelve, generated some questions from them, and also asked students if they were interested in getting their results and learning more about how to look at their results and maybe set personal goals. And I believe there's about seventy students during Viking Block that we'll be meeting with to explain to them how to read their report, how to look at areas that they're ready to acquire those skills and maybe set personal goals for the spring. So we're hoping that not only the teachers working on how to get those proficiency levels up, but now getting students involved in the conversation so that they can set personal goals. Because MAP is directly correlated to SAT scores, MCAT scores, college acceptances. They've even made correlations to, you know, if you're looking to get into particular schools, students with this RIT score on the MAP typically are getting into schools or, or students with these MAP scores, this is how they typically score on the SATs. And we're hoping maybe that's the buy-in for our upper-level students.
So Gina, if you had a student that potentially doesn't get their results tomorrow because they forgot to sign up, is there going to be another opportunity?
They can request it anytime for their results.
I'm not saying, I know, but just in case.
Well, I saw the list and you may want to make that reminder.
That's what I figured.
It was all, it was seventh, eighth, ninth, and tenth graders.
And I know which child probably.
Would you say it was seven, eight, nine, and ten?
That's who we heard back from. There were no eleventh graders that requested, but it's a small number of students that are taking it at the eleventh grade level at this point in time. Sorry.
No, that's okay. Any other questions?
No, I think there's a lot of great information.
Great. Last thing is our attendance. Like my colleagues mentioned, the attendance has dropped during these wonderful winter months. Back when I reported on attendance, I believe it was November, we had a ninety-four point seven percent a year-to-date average. It's dipped to ninety-one point eight at this point. So again, you're seeing a lot more issues with, with students remaining out of school. Broken down into classes, again, our, our goal for the accountability through the state is ninety percent or better. And, and so I use that information to break it down. So seventh grade, there are a hundred and forty-six students that were ninety percent or better, only twenty-two students that were ninety percent or less, so, less than ninety percent. So we consider those at-risk students because they're, they fall under the accountability, the state accountability level, baseline. Eighth grade, a hundred and sixty-four students were ninety percent or better. Fifteen, only fifteen were under ninety percent. So they really showed, they're, they're still on track as far as where they've been all year. Ninth grade has gotten better. When I first reported the ninth graders, I believe it was one-thirty was ninety percent or better. Right now, it's one-fifty-five, ninety percent or better. So the ninth grade has really shown a, a growth, maybe they don't have the flu, in ninth grade. Thirteen, only thirteen were considered at risk, nine, under ninety percent. Tenth grade, a hundred and forty-five were ninety percent or better. Sixteen percent were at, sixteen students were at risk. Eleventh grade, a hundred and thirty-six were ninety percent or better, fifteen students are at risk. And finally, the twelfth graders, seniors, a hundred and thirty-nine percent, or ninety percent or better, which I was actually very happy with because again, that grew from the last time I reported in November. However, what's grown also is the, the at-risk students who are twenty-seven. So myself and, and Mr. Bosch had a conversation today that we're going to reach out to the eleventh and twelfth graders because we are working on new language for our student handbook that really puts an emphasis on attendance in that ninety percent accountability rating for going forward. So we're really going to focus on that language. And we're also going to pilot a credit recovery program with the blessing of Superintendent Legault and, and Dr. Williams, with something we've discussed all year, really providing opportunities for students to make that time up, that seat time, utilizing, I know it's, it's, sounds difficult, but utilizing the extended detention. We have a, we have a staff member there. We have opportunities for students to come in, maybe use, utilizing some of the vacation days, that they can come in and make up some seat time, work on some things that maybe make up work, providing some maybe possibly community service. I know that's where, a direction that we'd like to go in, that can get them back to that verified accountability of ninety percent or better. So that's, we're going to look into doing that starting shortly because we're working with guidance that, that's something that we'd like to pilot, see where, what our obstacles might be going forward and how we can, you know, enhance those or correct them prior to rolling it out fully for the entire school, both junior and senior students. So that's where we're at for attendance.
Ask you a question about that?
Absolutely.
The ninety percent, is that attendance regardless of excused or unexcused?
Yes. Yep, that is regardless. So we, we're going to look at that information at the end of- So, we're going to look at that information at the end of the school year when it really comes down to, you know, promotion, graduation, because we do have a lot of, students do have a lot of difficulties. There's a lot of situations there that those, based on the state, we can accept and verify those absences as excused versus a non-excused absence. So, any other questions on that? Last couple of things, we do have, the scheduling portal is open for all families out there. They can begin to sign up for courses. We opened it today, and it will close on March 20th. March 23rd, our guidance department is going to start meeting with individual students. Every student's going to meet with their guidance counselor to go over. Mrs. Clifford made a great tracking device for all students that is going to be incorporated this year, you know, 7th through 12th, based on credits, where they, what they need, what they're required, things like that. So, that is open. The program of studies is up there. We do have a few new additions to the program of studies. We'll have that all settled, and again, the goal is to get everyone their schedule, whether it has teachers or not, we haven't decided, but at least everyone will have a schedule going into when they leave this year for school at some point.
And where is this portal? School Brains or something else?
That's School Brains.
Jeff, I just want to say real quick, I've said this to you a couple times, but I just continue to be impressed with the work you're doing up at the high school. You stepped into this job this summer, and there were landmines everywhere, and I just continue to be impressed with how you're handling-
Well, I have a good team, so, and I have a great support system, and it's between, you know, Superintendent Legault and Dr. Williams and the families out there. It's a great place to be, so-
We're lucky to have you here.
Oh, thank you.
Very lucky.
Thank you.
This school has become so far in such a short time.
Well, thank you. Again, it's, I'm not taking any credit for that. That's always been there. It's, you know, again, we have a good team, and we have a great community that really, you know, has bound together, and it's easier to work together and get things accomplished than not. So, and last thing, our ELA MCAS will be March 24th and 25th. We are finalizing the schedule for that.
Is that all grades due?
That is 10th grade. ELA MCAS will be 10th grade. So, just a reminder to families in the community, the goal the night before is to get some good night's sleep, eat a nice breakfast, and be aware that one of the big issues, cellphones and Apple Watches. So, just want to get it out there now before I put it in the parent update because we are going to have all students put their phones and/or their Apple Watches in the holders that we provided every classroom until the, until the test is out of the classroom. So, from 7:30 to 11, that, we're going old-school, I guess. That's what my kids call it. So, that's what we're going to do. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff, you also have some information on the cancellations on the Jazz festivals?
We do. So, some of the programs that our music department was going to be included have been canceled, looking for a later date.
Thalmith.
Thalmith this weekend. There was one at UNH that just got canceled today. Mr. Ponti is up to date with his information. He is amazing.
He didn't even know you were there.
So, he's been great, you know, looking for direction on different things, and, but I think it's all worked out because these, the programs are being canceled.
By the organizers, right?
So, yes, so, and they're being rescheduled, not as of right now?
We'd like, they'd like to reschedule. If this time of year is-
Yes, yep.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Guess I got to let you guys off tomorrow. You want me to still come and visit you, and we'll talk about the same things? Kate?
We'd like to hear your call.
Kate's like, I've already got them. My four-ring binder ready. The two guys are, I got your four-ring, your five-ring binder ready for me tomorrow, Kate. You guys are all set. Thank you.
Next up, we have Dr. Williams, Assistant Superintendent, to talk about Alice training update. Thank you. Oh, sorry.
Just wait for Dr. Williams to go over this before you leave.
Great. So, as you know, this is our second full year of implementing Alice as our protocol for, in the event of an intruder in any of the buildings or on campus. So, the training involves sort of a three-pronged approach. All staff members have gone through an online training, a 45-minute online training, a face-to-face training with a trained trainer within the district. There's about five of us that are trained trainers, as well as trained trainers in the police department. So, and then the third part of that is drill scenario. So, all staff members have been through that. This is the second year for some staff, so they went through the recertification as opposed to the initial certification training. And now, we're at the point in the year where it's, you know, winter usually, and we stay inside with a lot of our table discussions with students, teachers spending the time to go through the protocols within the classroom at the lower level. There's a storybook that goes along with the conversation and talking about scenarios within the classroom setting in the event that they need to evacuate, which is always the first option that we want to consider, where they would best evacuate out of the specific location where they are in the building, talking about rally points, where students should report if they are not with their teacher or with an adult, getting even at the elementary level, students savvy enough that they could evacuate themselves to the rally point. And we specifically chose rally points at the lower levels that do not require students to cross streets. So, now, we have had conversations with the police department, and there are one available for any classroom that is looking for more clarification or follow-up based on the conversations that we're now having with students, if any additional things that we haven't considered in troubleshooting those. But then, as we move into spring, we will start moving them around the building and physically to rally points, practicing the drills, and all three of the drills, whether it's lockdown with a barricade within a room, whether they're preparing for a counter, or whether they're evacuating. And the biggest difference with Alice as opposed to any other protocol is there's not going to be any surprise. So, we will publicly announce when we will be doing these drills so that everybody's aware of them. It's not about instilling fear or the element of surprise. This is practice. We want people to be in the best state of mind and fully aware of everything going on, and when we instill fear, certainly, it shuts down people's ability to think clearly, and we want them thinking clearly when they're practicing these drills. So, parents will be made aware when the drills begin in each of the buildings so that students will know on the days that they're happening. And we certainly encourage, you know, students to be here for it because we want them to have that information and make the best informed decisions in the, you know, unlikely event, hopefully, that they would ever need to utilize those skills.
Does this include the custodians, kitchen staff, everyone?
Everyone.
What about volunteers that may or may not be in the school? Like, if there's some people who volunteer a lot or whatever, would you include volunteers or not?
So, certainly, we can do that. The training really primarily has been for people who have the responsibility of the care of any students, and that includes substitutes. But certainly, we have done a couple of community ones. They haven't been well-attended, but certainly, we'll continue to do that.
I was just thinking, like, well, God forbid anything should ever happen. Like, so, say, for example, like, the school store at the Mitchell School. So, there's volunteers that are in the cafe at lunch?
Yep.
Well-
Right. So, every, every room- Every room within every building-
Well, this is my last year.
Has the protocol, the laminated sheets in every area of every building.
Well, there's people, there's parents in the copy rooms, too. It's not just the school store.
Right. And have you noticed in those areas that there is the laminated copy of what to do in the event?
Well, I don't go to the copy room, so, no.
Oh.
In the cafe, I'm usually just rushing.
She has tunnel vision.
I just want to save myself.
And the other important thing is, the police department, as school-trained trainers, we are only able to train school personnel, but the police have the ability to train anyone and everyone, and they have done a number of community trainings as well.
Okay.
Is there a possibility going forward that this could be done sooner in the school year? Just, I mean, I went to the training when they first implemented it, and it's, you know, it's comprehensive, but when you have kids moving from buildings, you know, as you build upon it, it's going to come back to the kids where their rally point is. But is there any benefit to doing it earlier in the school year? I'm not thinking there's ever going to be an incident, but just for administration and students to have this in the fall versus closer to the end of the school year?
Right. So, yes, as we become more familiar with it, and as you say, as the students transition with a foundation skill set, then it's just a matter of acclimating themselves to the new surroundings. So, certainly, any, you know, anything that they're learning at any of the other buildings, it's the same language, it's the same protocols, it's just, okay, now, what does it look like in this new building or in this new classroom? So, yeah, I mean, our intent is every year, we get, we perfect it more and more so that we're able to then be able to have those drills right at the start of the year, and maybe it's just those new young students entering the district that we have to roll it out in a more methodical way.
I want to share, because we do have the youngest in the U.S. We did start in the fall this year. Last year, obviously, first year, we rolled that out. But we started our same instructional rollout, but this year in the fall. So, just as we would talk and discuss about any safety drills that we perform at Central School, you know, between fire drills, bus evacuations, right at the beginning of the year, we started these conversations. And so, teachers had the lessons and knew when we started, September, October, what to lay out and when. So, we did start at the beginning of the year, so, just to your point, we do have the youngest, our three-year-olds or four-year-olds who have not maybe heard it for the first time, and obviously, repeating it in K and 1 and 2. And like Dr. Williams had shared, you know, the students, as we send them off to Mitchell School, you know, they have a background, at least they've been through it at least once, obviously, those that are up there now, but we do start. We start early in the year. We did this year, and we'll continue to do that.
And I know at that older, like, it's just a newer introduction as of last year. So, I think there's still more of a lack of familiarity, potentially even at the high school level. You know, the kids probably aren't as necessarily as engaged because they don't get a cute storybook read to them or what have you, and I know there are laminated copies. I saw them in a bunch of the classrooms. So, I know the information's there. It's just, in my mind, it would make sense to maybe do it a little earlier in the year so everyone has that kind of underbelts.
And like fire drills. It should be done, you know, at the beginning of the year as we get them in and start a new school year, but then to make sure that it stays in their minds. So, and as far as the staff, it's always within the first month of school that everybody is fulfilling their training obligations.
So, the staff is definitely trained right away?
Yes.
Or refreshed?
That's part of their annual mandated training.
And of course, the kids rely on the staff in a situation like that, so.
Right. You would hope that there's always going to be a staff member available.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you all for coming and sharing all of that information with us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Chromebook update by Mr. John Shea, School Business Administrator.
Chromebook update. I think we have, as you know, at the beginning of the year, it was a rocky start. Part of it, just the, how busy it was for our IT guys, but I think we've made a lot of improvements. We now have posted the schedule for Chromebook.
Continue.
We have posted the, we have, I can't even think now. We have posted the schedule for the students to, that have Chromebook issues. It's now, that schedule is posted on the IT department door. I gave you a copy of what one looks like. It's five days, a week at Viking Block, and two other days in the library. I know a lot of, a lot of the kids may not know, have known that, so we sent out an email for the kids to let them know, hey, if you had, is these seven days, seven times during the week that you can come? And we also let them know if you can't make it in one of those seven time periods, you can always go to the main office and we'll track you down. Then other, other side was, just to show you how many Chromebooks we have today ready to go out.
Thank you, John.
We might need a new copier.
We, one of the other things we have begun, we have an IT, we have a class that's run by our IT coordinator. There's five students in that class. They are taught a lot of different things, but one of the things they taught us, how to fix computers, how to fix Chromebooks, how to fix regular computers, they're fixing, they're fixing screens, they're fixing keyboards, they're fixing the charging issue. Just as an example, when, what we've done in the past with the charging issues, we've sent them out to a company to fix, they send them back, it takes two weeks. These kids that are in this class fix that charging issue in six minutes. So, we're getting the turnout.
Is it actual fixed to the charging issue?
Yeah, you just plug it back in. That's the fix.
Because something's loose on the inside.
Yeah.
Right.
John, are they untangling cords?
No, those are, they're being charged.
Let me ask a question. Kiara, you've been very vocal about the Chromebook issue. Are kids still coming to you, or are you still hearing rumblings about Chromebook?
I still hear these issues.
Is there a way for the student body to, for this to be, like, the students to put this out to other students? Like, it appears to me like that we're doing everything-
Well, Kiara had an idea earlier. She said something about Google Classroom.
Yeah, so, one thing about, like, the email, I saw that because I check my email, but I know countless other students who've never checked their email in the time of being a student and having their student email. And so, like, I respect that sentiment, however, I think that it would be more useful to put it on the guidance classrooms that they have for all of the classes that they have for 2021, 2020. And so, I get, I see those things on Classroom much more often than I know that students check their emails, and so, I feel like that would be more helpful to students. And then, I just have one other quick question. So, I'm noticing on here, all of these dates are passed, so this is kind of a two-part question. Are there going to be more dates for students to pick up Chromebook? And if so, do we have Chromebooks for students, more Chromebooks for students to pick up?
Yeah, this is this week's.
No, but the latest date is March 10th, which is today.
Yeah, so, they'll have a new one tomorrow.
Okay.
They'll go on Classroom now, right?
This picture in the back is all of the Chromebooks that are available.
Yeah, this picture was taken today at 6:30. These are all the Chromebooks ready to go out.
And they, are they pre-assigned to somebody, or?
No, no, they're just waiting.
They're just waiting for somebody to come down and say, hey, my Chromebook's broken, swap it and do whatever magic you do.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, like, I feel like with students, there's never going to be, like, a perfect way for this information to get out to students, considering if students don't check their email, if they don't check Google Classroom, or even if we put it on the announcements, which would be helpful, some, in some classes, sometimes it's just too loud for students to hear announcements. But the progress that they've made has been really great.
Thank you, Mr. George.
I could tell the guys that Sierra's happy. Because usually, I'm leaving the meeting dialing them up. What are you guys doing?
That's what we usually dial up about you.
Thank you.
Ellen, can I add something?
Sure, go ahead.
Before you go into your readings. We heard from the EBEA last week. They met Tuesday. They asked to have another meeting with us in mediation. As you know, that we sent that out, we agreed. The attorney did have a conference call today with the mediator and the representative from the EBEA. The next date that we will meet is on April 15th. Tax day. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have, this is the first reading of proposed changes to file BEDH Public Committee at School Committee meetings. So, this particular policy, and actually, there's a group of policies, but this one in particular came down from DESI and MASCE, was recommended changes because of the, I don't know, I can't remember if it was Newton or, there was a, there was a district that had a lawsuit against them, and so, this is how this came to be. So, there was additional changes. So, because our attorney, John Foskett, had revised this in the past, I gave this to him to revise again. to revise again. And so you can see the red line document that's in your packet. And let's see, so you can see the original one and then the red line version. And so this is the first reading. And then I have an action item to go, well, we can do that after.
Well, can I, I don't know what the appropriate time is, whether maybe it's for the motion to be made, but I just want to ask, so my understanding is that the, the reading process exists for a reason, to give you a time, a chance to read the proposed changes, mull them over, consider them.
That's correct.
You could waive that in the case where there's an emergency to pass a policy where you, maybe you're no longer in compliance with state law, or there's an urgent change to practice in the district. But I'm curious about why would you be being asked to waive that here?
So, so the public comment, so when I talked about this with the representative from the MASC, so we could waive it on the first, we could waive the first reading, or excuse me, we should waive, we could waive the second reading and vote on the first reading. And that's, he said, as long as we give this out to the school committee members prior to the meeting, so, and you had a chance to review it prior to the meeting, that you could potentially, if you choose not to waive the second reading, then that's up to you.
But what's the emergent nature of it that we need to waive the reading?
So the lawsuit that happened in a, in a district just recently, I don't know if it was last year or whatever the timetable was, because of that lawsuit, that's why these changes were recommended and came down. So.
Okay, but still, why is it emergent? Why can't it wait two weeks?
It could wait. It's up to you guys, whatever you want to decide.
I mean, I think it's become habit of this committee to waive readings. And I think Tim's right, it exists for a reason. I mean, if I, if I was going to say something of an emergent nature, I would put bullying prevention and residency policy way ahead of public comment, yet we're not asking to waive those.
I had a password issue.
If you don't, if you choose to waive it, that's fine. If you choose to waive the second reading, that's quite fine.
I had a password issue with getting onto the drive this weekend and reading the agenda ahead of time, so I wasn't able to preview this before tonight.
I don't think it, Barbara didn't upload it. She didn't upload it until Monday.
Okay, well, I wouldn't have known that anyway. So, I mean, I couldn't get online. So anyway, I just wanted to mention, the first time I laid eyes on this was 15 minutes before the meeting. So I just, if there's not a reason to wait, I would rather, I mean, if there's not a reason, all right. If the committee feels that way.
Yeah. So next up, we have the first reading of proposed changes to file JICFB bullying prevention. And that is also enclosed in your packet.
Were these also a result of the recent MASC mailing that had some policies?
They were not, they were not.
So where did these changes come from?
Just to add, because we had some issues recently this past year and possibly in the past, but most recently this past year with hate speech. And we had a parent email into us, and I'm going to let Trista speak to it also.
This is just, if you look at the policy, it truly is, it just incorporates specifically the term hate speech.
I saw that, I just wanted.
I'm just explaining why, Teresa. It's in there because of what happened in the district earlier in the year. And that was considered more hate speech versus bullying. And there, there had been a concern addressed by a parent some time ago, and it kind of came back around as a result of this. And we felt that it was due diligent to, and it wasn't necessarily anything, you know, that would be a great effort to just add hate speech. Because it is, it falls within this, but it can stand on its own. So we looked at other policies from other districts to see, a lot of them are very similar. Of course, as you would expect between the districts, but we did find some that actually had hate speech. So this definition of hate speech is a combination of looking at some other district policies as well as looking at mass general law as far as how they define hate speech. So it really is a legal definition. It's nothing that we created in and of ourselves. We just added it because we felt that A, the parent had a very valid point, concern, et cetera. And then with what happened, this just makes our policy a little more substantial.
I completely agree with the change. We just, I don't know if anybody else has seen it yet, but we just got a mailing from MASC with a bunch of policies.
Yes, we did see that.
And no, this was completely separate. And that's.
That was more my, like, is that what triggered this or did something else trigger it?
So I would also like to add that, so the Policy Subcommittee, Gordon, Trista and myself met twice la, was it last week? It seems like, last week was a blur. So we met twice last week and we discussed these policies at length. And all three of us, Gordon, I can't, he's not here, but Trista can attest to, we all agreed, we discussed what we were going to bring for action items and regarding these particular policies. And so we said we could, do you remember that?
We talked about the way, the reading process and the waiving of it. And certainly, you know, we want everyone to have the time to be able to review it, ask questions, et cetera. The public comment section, you know, we felt that there was a precedent that was set, and this was just as a result of that. And as far as this particular policy, I mean, it certainly is up to the committee if they choose to waive the second reading or not. We're not necessarily encouraging it or insisting on it, but just for purposes of, you know, if, if we felt as a subcommittee that the change wasn't completely substantive, so it's not completely changing the policy. For example, this is just an addition, the first one is, is truly in line with what we have to do. Like, we don't really have a whole lot of leeway on the public comment section. Certainly, this, this hate, hate speech, we can change however, but we did deliberate over this and researched it for a while. So we're just presenting it, and it's up to you guys if you want to, you know, review it, talk about it more.
I'm actually fine with passing it. I mean, I looked it over and it all seemed straightforward. I just wanted to make the point that I just, I feel like we're kind of now just expecting that just a couple of times that's happened where we just waived the reading.
We don't, we don't deal with everything, though.
Done it a couple of times this year. And I just want to make sure that there is a reason why we're, we're asking to do that if we're doing it.
And I don't necessarily think there has to be a defined reason. I mean, certainly if there's a concern by, you know, someone else who hasn't been involved in writing the policy, absolutely. But some of it's also in the interest of time, so we're not continuing to bring things forth on the agenda if there's really not the need for ongoing discussion. But those of you who aren't on the Subcommittee, the Policy Subcommittee, this is where you say, well, I don't feel comfortable with waiving it. Ellen can present it, it was empty, present it as an option. And if, you know, the committee doesn't feel that, that's perfectly fine.
Fair enough, thank you.
Thank you, Trista. Next up, we have the first reading of policy, excuse me, the proposed changes to file JFR, Residency Policy and Enforcement Strategy. And that is something that Dr. Williams and Karen Clifford had approached me about. And this was not in the list of, that came to us from the MASC for updated policies, but this is something that was requested because it, in, they needed something to be changed or fixed or reworked. And so when I was approached, and I brought this, we also discussed this at the Policy Subcommittee meeting last week, the copy of deed, this was on the very first page, column A, copy of deed and or. So it was requested that we just change it to or. And then on the second page, on the first column, with regard to the purchase and sale agreement and insurance binder, we added must be finalized within 60 days, consideration, consideration will be given on a case-by-case basis by the superintendent. And that was discussed with Gordon, Trista and myself on the Policy Subcommittee. I didn't know if Dr. Williams wanted to chime in on that.
Sure. So we originally brought it up because we're in the process of making a consistent enrollment practice at each of the school buildings. Being a small district, we don't have a human resource department where enrollment happens for all students. So parents who are enrolling multiple children, they would go to each individual building and it looked a little different in every building. So we're trying to make that process a little bit more tolerable where parents can enroll and submit information that is for all students to one building, and it will be shared with the other buildings. And then anything that is school-specific, they can do that at the school level. So there were two things that came up. One really came up during preschool enrollment and starting with the kindergarten enrollment, that the prior policy said that we wanted the mortgage payment and the deed. And we thought that was a little overkill for us to be expecting both. Certainly, if they have a mortgage payment, they own something. So we, we changed that to or. The other thing that we find is if school, if families are moving into the district, are anticipating moving into the district and have a purchase and sale agreement, it's really disruptive to a student to not be allowed to start in the school district at the beginning of a school year. And if it's not in our policy, then students, if they're not sleeping in, in East Bridgewater, they have to stay in their town of residency. And a student could potentially be coming in to start school like three weeks into the school year, and they started in an old school, and now they're trying to get acclimated as the year has started. With that said, also on the reverse end, a student may be moving out of school at the end of a school year, and we would like to give flexibility to the, the school to have that child remain till the end of the year, knowing it doesn't make sense for a student to transition out of a school within the last month of the school year. So we wanted that in the policy so that there could be that flexibility to allow families to start school, knowing there's an anticipated permanent residency that's going to be happening, or to remain in the school, knowing that they'll be exiting close to the end of the school year.
So for this.
Certainly, that would be the superintendent discretion on a case-by-case basis.
And the purchase and sales, did you need or want something to be in there that stated only at the beginning of the, the school year, purchase and sales would be accepted or no?
Yes, so we had in years, I can't put my finger on it, so we'll have to create a new, but it would actually be a form that a parent would fill out, requesting permission to start the school year. And then the building principal would make a recommendation for approval, and then it would go up to the superintendent for final approval. So that documentation from the parent would need to be provided with it.
Okay. Thank you. So I just wanted to point out that we only are, on this, on the agenda, we only have a request to waive the second reading on BEDH, not on the JFR, because when I had talked to Dr. Williams, she had said that there was no urgency and that she could wait until the second meeting in March, in March. So I just wanted to point that out. So at this time, is there anyone here for public comment? No? Thank you. So moving on, I would take a motion to approve the school committee meeting minutes from February 4th, 2020, and February 25th, 2020. Moved by, moved by Teresa, seconded by Rob. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. And I would take a motion to approve Accounts Payable Warrant 37SV dated March 11th, 2020.
So moved.
Moved by Trista?
Second.
Seconded by Teresa. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And take a motion to approve Payroll Warrant 36PS dated March 4th, 2020.
So moved.
Moved by Teresa? Seconded by Tim. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous for all of them. And I take a motion to approve, to approve, to waive the two, well, we'll see what the vote is, to waive the two reading process and vote on the first reading of the proposed changes to file BEDH Public Comment at School Committee Meetings.
So moved.
Moved by Tim?
Second.
Seconded by Trista. Any discussion?
I just want it noted for the record that I think we need to make sure we establish some kind of a baseline for why we're asking to waive it in the future. I, I get this, this makes sense. I just, there's a reason for the policy.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No. So that's one, two, four, yes, as in one percent, one, no. At this time, I would take a motion, oh, let's see. At this time, I'd take a motion to approve policy, School Committee Policy, BEDH Public Comment at School Committee Meetings. So we, we waived the first and now we're approving it.
So moved.
Moved by Tim?
Second.
Seconded by Rob. Any discussion? I know you already commented on the last one.
So essentially, just for the public who hasn't seen the proposal, the, the new policy would essentially give the committee more latitude to extend public comments if we wanted to, in addition to clarifying what can, how, how the public conducts themselves when speaking to the committee. And gives the committee the power to stop the conversation if it's not helpful. Correct. Thank you.
Well, and I think it just fine-tuned, fine-tuned the verbiage because of what happened in Natick, I believe it was the district.
I don't object to the new policy, I just don't think it's emergent enough that we should be waiving the reading.
Tim, you moved it. Rob, you seconded it? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No. Thank you. And I would like to thank EB Cam for always live streaming and recording our meetings. And at this time, I would take a motion to adjourn the meeting. Moved by Teresa?
Second.
Seconded by Tim. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, have a good night.